Makes them want to come to school. But I think every staff member, you especially have done that. You know, I think just everybody's there for somebody else than maybe for many other people. But all of our students have that relationship with somebody and hopefully they'll help their academic and their children.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
For the finals.
You have truly made our district stronger. And I hope you really understand how much of the impact you've made. And you need to put the humility aside and celebrate yourself because you're amazing.
I think I'll feel even better once we make this process even stronger. Because I feel like there's always something that we can work on, so.
It's close.
Feel a lot better on graduation day when these kids are walking across the stage.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for your work. Okay, our next report is Jobs for America Graduates. Rebecca Cornet, Tracy Martinez, and Mr. Norman. There's another question. Is this somebody? I'll let you go then, do your mail.
My name's Rebecca Cornet, and I am the current specialist at the Garden City Alternative Center to start the program, the JAG program over there this year.
My name's Tracy Martinez. This is my third year as a JAG specialist. What JAG stands for, Jobs for America's Graduates, it was, this is the fifth year it's been in Kansas. It has been a program in different states. It's been in over 33 states, I believe, for over 20 years. JAG Kansas just started a couple of years ago. Like I said, this is my third year. And so basically what our mission is, what our vision is, to help kids just stay on track with graduation. It's basically a life preparation class. So we have guest speakers that come in and speak. We go on college visits. We kind of show them different outlets as to whether they graduate, whether that be a job, the military, post-secondary education. And so the process that works with JAG is the students fill out a profile, participant profile. And so they have to fill it out. We get to know their background, a little bit of what they have going on at home. Rebecca can kind of speak on some of the barriers that we look at for each student because each student has to qualify for JAG. It's not a program where kind of anybody can get in. They have to be, they have to qualify for it and actually come speak to us. And so she can kind of share with you some of the barriers and then what we look at as far as our numbers and our data.
Some of the things that we look at are what they, what we require for JAG is a minimum of five. There are over 30, I believe there's 33 different barriers that range from mother or father did not graduate from college or go to college or trade school or graduate from high school, single parent home, father, mother or father migrant worker, drop out of school, like a previous drop out of school, a parent or a single parent themselves. There's, I mean, it actually is a very, very broad, I think, off my head. It's a very broad spectrum as far as that. Like attendance, actually, we're just talking about, they're just going over attendance. That's another one. If they've had a low academic performance, I mean, there's, it's just very broad as far as the different barriers. And they need to have five or more to actually do the, be in the JAG class in the program.
And then we, as far as what our curriculum is, we do, we have competencies that we cover. We have 37 core competencies that we really focus on. So like at my program, at the high school, we do a multi-year program. So I have 10 through 12 graders. And I have each of them, I have a 10th grade class, 11th and 12th grade class. And so we focus on the different competencies are verbal communication, how to fill out a resume, application, guest speakers, and how to communicate and build our social skills. And then different employee ability skills. And then there's a lot of different things that we go over. And again, like I said, it's life skills, so just building relationships. For example, some of the activities that we do in our class, we go on, we go on college visits, I said, and then we have guest speakers that come and speak. For example, my dad, Steve Martinez, he's a sheriff's officer, so he's come and spoke. We do community service, so we have a couple of projects coming up. Some of my students will be helping at Boo at the Zoo. And so any way that we can kind of get the kids out in the community. And then within our program too, we have a club called Career Association. So it's kind of like SUCO within our class, and we have officers. And she will speak in a little bit, but this is Lacey Barnett. She is our class secretary. And so it's, it's a chance to give the students some leadership and some ownership over their program. So it's very much a student-led program. And then Rebecca can kind of talk to you on some of the goals that we have as specialists and what we're held accountable to.
One of the things for the alternative program is that we have a 75% graduation rate that we have to meet at least versus the multi-year, they have a 90% graduation rate that they need to meet. But along with that, not only do we do that as far as when they're in school and in high school and the things that, the different properties that we have to have, competencies that we have to cover, we also do the follow-up, which is a huge part of it, I think. And it's a huge part of our job and the thing that, what sets it apart from everything else. We follow the students for 12 months after they graduate high school. So we contact them at least once a month. They have contacted us usually more than that, but for at least once a month, every single month for the entire, starting in May, all the way through to the next May. And so that allows them to, I mean, if they're having, I mean, they, they contact you about like starting school because they get nervous, or what do I wear, or, but then at the same time, it's, you know, it's not, my job isn't working with school. So how, you know, working on getting another job. Because a lot of them do provide for families and stuff at the same time. But that allows them to have that kind of assistance in continuing with school. So they don't have to stop going to college and continuing their education and being that first person in their family and allowing them to help their family at the same time and not feeling like they have to choose. So it's kind of the big thing for us is that we are really, really, we turn in reports every month on that type of stuff, well, everything that we do. But that's a big one for us is that we are contacting every single student during our follow-up for that 12 months.
And we're funded through TANF, so we get monies from grants and donations. It has increased significantly in the past year. We have a lot of new leadership from our base in Topeka. They do a great job of going around speaking to schools because a lot of people still don't know what JAG is. But again, it's just another resource that we have in our, in our building. And like Erica had said, it's about building relationships with the kids. And that's something that we really focus on is we're there, they know that they can speak to us about anything. A lot of them may not have that support from anywhere else. And so this, again, kind of, our role can kind of be described as a mentor as well. Because again, we want to see why they're, why they're not at school, or why they're failing, or why they're struggling. And then what we can do as specialists within our school to help them out. And so for our roster, we have 35 to 50 is what each school has. And we have 68 programs over in the state of Kansas. And they started out with 25 five years ago. So we have grown significantly in the past couple of years. And then for Garden City, this was the third year that we got the 505 award. So we hit the 90% graduation rate, 80% or more positive outcome, which includes employment full-time, post-secondary education or the military, 60% employed in a job in the public or private sectors, 60% employed in a full-time job, and then 80% in post-secondary education. So this is the third year that Garden City High School has hit that. Since I've been there, I believe I've had every single one of my seniors graduate except for two. One of them went back and finished his GED online. So again, just being that resource and being that outlet for these students. And again, this is Lacey Barnett, and she is traveling to Salina with us tomorrow. We have a leadership development conference is another thing we offer the students is just some leadership opportunities. And then as well, we have our I-N-I ceremony coming up in October. That stands for initiation and installation ceremony. So it's just the night that we recognize the JAG students. So they get to bring their families. We're going to make it really formal. But again, it's something that the students lead up, and that's something that they do all the decorations. It's going to be a potluck, so they actually get to bring their stuff and just anything to get them more excited and to make JAG their program at the school. And personally for me, I have seen just the students be more excited being there, especially when they feel like they're heard and when they feel like they do notice that people are there, like Erica and Rebecca and myself. And I know many other staff members as well, but just that they are seen and that they're heard. So this is Lacey, and she presented, or she put together a speech that she would like to share with you guys.
Yeah, really quickly, just because I know Tracy won't say it. And last year, for 2016-17 school year, Tracy was out of the 68 program. She actually was the state of Kansas Specialist of the Year also, which is really awesome deal.
So as Ms. Martinez repeated three times, my name is Lacey. So here's a speech that I came up with. My first half-day of sophomore year, I came into my JAG class and I was the only kid. Ms. Martinez was so friendly and nice. She told me it was her first year as a teacher. The first full day, we got into the classroom and no one talked. The days went on and our class became closer and closer. Junior year came and I think I can speak for everyone in our class. It was definitely the hardest year of our lives. Ms. Martinez continued to encourage us and love us. We definitely had our disagreements and we all had so much going on, we started to take it out on each other. At heart though, we still loved each other. We said things we didn't mean, but in the end, we just needed the summer break. Senior year started and me and Ms. Martinez and I met the summer before school started, and we decided that we wanted this year to be the best year for our JAG class. Even though the year just started a couple of months ago, the bond that we have with each other is stronger and better than ever. JAG has always been my home. It has always been the place where I know I can spend the whole class period just talking about my life. I haven't always gone along with every single person in my class, but I've learned to accept people for who they are and vice versa. We're all in this together and we have been there through a lot, they have, my classmates have been there with me through a lot of hard times. We have all come together as one and have done so much more together. We have gone on so many college visits, done so much more community service, put in the I-N-I for the second year. We've had guest speakers come and speak about different things, and JAG has exposed me to what life is after high school. We have truly become one big family. JAG has taught me to never give up and fight for what's right. JAG has taught me that in the, at the end of the day, you will truly know who your real friends are. It has taught, it has helped me to learn more in my personal life and has helped me get out into the community and do more community service than I have ever done before. It has helped me realize what colleges I do and don't want to go to. Ms. Martinez has become an inspiration and a mentor to me. The first day, I thought we would never get this close. As the years go on, she has always been the person I can call whenever. I need someone, some help in my personal life or with school. Whatever it is, she's always there for me. JAG has taught me that it's time to do what is best for me in the future. At first, I wanted to stay at Garden City Community College for two years, but I really wanted to go to a four-year Christian university. So Ms. Martinez took me on a college visit to Barclay College in Havlin, Kansas. I really fell in love with it the moment I stepped out of the car. I applied that night after the visit and I got accepted. So I'll be going to Barclay in August of 2018. I have also been voted as the senior class secretary. Tomorrow, myself and three other students will be going to our leadership development conference in Salina. And I'll be presenting a speech basically just like this one in the public speaking event. If I place in the top three, I'll get to go to Washington DC. I personally feel that if I didn't start my sophomore year with JAG, I wouldn't be where I am today. I feel like I wouldn't have got accepted into Barclay or come this far in my life. I wouldn't have given, been given the opportunity to participate in the leadership conference. I have been through so much and JAG has been the program and the people that has gotten me through it. My classmates have loved me on the hard days and laughed with me on the good days. I wouldn't be the same person I am today without all 14 people in my class. All together, we have become one. We have become the program. We have become one big family. No matter where I go in the future, they will always hold a special place in my heart. And then we have invitations for you guys to come to the I-N-I ceremony.
Okay, and then here's just a couple, this is just some other handoffs we have. A little bit more of the statistics or anything like that that you would like to.
Thank you for coming and enjoying the presentation.
I did have, I did have a couple of questions. Did you say that we have 35 students in that, 35 to 50 at any given time?
Yeah, right now on my roster, I have 35.
And then I was just wondering, do students have to maintain like any certain standards to stay in the program? Or they, once they're accepted, they just?
Once they're accepted, so the plan or what would the best scenario is that they start out as sophomores and then they have the same class of seniors. That way they can master those competencies over the couple of years. Because we don't expect them to learn all of that in one year. And so we really try our best to get as many sophomores as we can. That would be a great effort. And then again, it's up to them whether they want to stay in the program. It's not for everybody. But, so I always give the option to at least stay in for a semester. And if it's really just not something that they like or if they're not comfortable with it, they can opt out of it and you can drop it. It's an elective, so it does count for credit. And again, since Lacey and some other students have been in there for a couple of years and have gotten their word out with the program, we do have a lot more students who are interested.
The other part of that too is like with the barriers, having a minimum of five. But also we go back to review the profiles of them, and we're thankful for having a school barrier to remove. There's obviously some that you can't remove, like you can't remove the parents that were incarcerated and things like that. If they have low academic performance, you can, they don't have the ability to, things like that, you can ethically organize or improve them, because the way, ideally you'd want to think how those reduce on your students.
Are we positioned to grow as this becomes more popular and realized by the students as an asset?
Yes, we are working on getting a lot more funding and they are actually talking about expanding more for next year. There are schools on the waiting list in Kansas for it. And so that's a really good thing. And we would like, and we do have enough students at Garden City High School to, I mean, expand for two programs because there's a lot of students that we can serve within our community, but it is something that's definitely growing.
Is there a chance it can be taken away from us?
I think the only way that would happen is if the funding got pulled. But like I said, we do have a lot more people in place in our office in Topeka that that's what their job, they go out and they get donations and they have partnerships. We have some schools that are partners with John Deere and anything that they can get sponsored with and get some donations.
Last spring, the legislative legislation, JAG did a rule in Kansas where it requires to have it in school, the high school. Then several companies appear to each school in Kansas that will be in the district.
So we're not responsible for our own fundraising here, though. Like somebody added to the end, is it?
Yeah.
I believe we funded a portion of it to get it into the alternative.
Yeah, 10%, that's what we asked this year of the partnerships.
Well, it fits perfectly with our alternative plans. It fits perfectly in our community. I mean, you guys are, this is amazing. Great meeting. I couldn't say it enough.
Mark, do you have a question?
No, it was answered.
Okay. Anybody? All right. I see.
Thank you.
Okay, bring this unfinished business to Kate. Kate, you ready to pick plan? Did anyone have any questions on that plan? We've had a presentation, opportunity to ask Dr. Carter if there were any other comments or return. So does anyone have any return, your question? Casey's here, Anna's here.
Yeah, I guess I have some concerns about the technology.
Okay. Casey, can you guys come out and address your questions?
Well, I guess my biggest concern is just, I mean, obviously, technology, it can be a great thing, and I think everybody wants some access to technology. I guess my biggest concern is have we evaluated what technology has done for our district? So like, for example, at the high school, do we feel like it's improved academic performance? Has it addressed achievement gaps or even made any kind of impact on achievement gaps? Like, have we done enough evaluation of the technology that we do have in the district to move forward with such a huge plan is my concern. Maybe Dr. Carter will be the step. I don't know if that's just specifically for you guys or?
Who wants to address? Who wants to?
Sort of answer?
I think we've looked at the stats from the high schools since we've implemented it. Graduation rate is better, I can tell you that. Discipline incidents are going down. Discipline incidents with the iPad are going down from when we began. Whether or not students' ACT scores, when I looked at them, I don't know that you can say up or down based upon an iPad. I guess you can't say based upon an iPad, our graduation rate has risen or it's fallen. You could probably spin it any way you wish. We haven't looked at the data. I don't know if the instruction offices looked at the data at the high school where, he's gone. I don't know that they specifically looked at it and you can tie any achievement improvement based upon the iPad or, or say it's a negative effect. I don't know that we've ever done it to that extent, no. Not to my knowledge, I don't.
Certainly though, it's become a real element of our high school culture.
I think it's a necessary tool.
Okay. If the kids would tell you, yes. When they're in my room and have one that's broken and they need a owner, I mean, it's they want it right then because they, it's essential to what they do every single day. They don't, it's hard for them to go a day without it because they need it as part of their curriculum. So it's, I think, you know, it's a necessity for those kids.
And then it's all, it's been interesting to me particularly to watch how you guys have implemented that over the years and the learning curve and then the efficiencies that you've developed as a result of what you've learned. Some of that is, is evolution of technology, I realize, like our network and that kind of thing. And some of it is just the training and the adaptation of the teachers themselves in the classroom. But I'm still amazed at your presentation in the numbers a few weeks ago, about something like $189,000 has been net increase for such a significant undertaking. That's very expensive. And so you have to take that up other ways. And some of it is the efficiencies we've talked about. And it's, it's exciting. I don't know, there's still questions to be answered. And to me, a lot of that is getting your feet wet and getting in there and see how it works. I think we talked the last time you presented about the sort of flexibilities in each of the buildings. What works? What are they, what are we learning from the habits of the children and the families and the classrooms from the standpoint of, do you really give a fifth grader an iPad and expect him to keep it unbroken? Those type of questions. But it appeared to me that from what you said, it's going to be a lot like what we learned at the high school. How does it work? What works best? And how do we adapt?
Dan, I might be able to address a little bit because I gave that portion of the presentation at the last meeting on the evaluation of it. And we probably, we started off heavily evaluating the iPads the first couple of years with student surveys and staff surveys. And we probably do what we needed to do with that information in terms of finding concrete things to measure, and we realized that. And so when we looked at the K-E plan, we knew that evaluating it really did to be a big part of it, but how you make that work, like what concrete data do you use when this is, it's a tool or a device that's really supposed to aid both instruction and learning? And it's going to aid people quite differently, we hope, and individually to meet their needs. So the new walkthrough that we've developed has some specifics to technology on it. But more important, we're looking at things like student engagement, fewer discipline incidents or more types of projects that kids are doing. Are they high on DOK level or are they still low, very low-level skills? Those are the things we want to see increased with the technology. We had ICLE come in and do an evaluation last year at the high school. And in some areas, we're stronger than what we were giving ourselves before. And in some areas, we need to improve. Like, for example, some of those independent tasks do still now need to move up to that next level. So I don't know that we have concrete data, but we know that that will be a necessity going forward in terms of evaluating.
When you talk about student engagement, do you mean like, I mean, what exactly do you mean by that, honestly?
Right. So that means the task at hand, the student is engaged in the task. That can be through using academic language. That could be through a project-based learning assignment. That could be actively listening and responding to higher-level questions. But it's not just set yet. The teacher isn't being the provider of information anymore. The student is an active participant in his overall learning. That's engagement.
And so we track that, we felt like there's an increase.
We have tracked it, but not well. Our new walkthrough forum tracks it specifically. Like if a student, if the whole class is on task, you can mark that. But if not, we'll mark how many are off. We'll mark how the technology is being used on the new walkthrough at what DOK level. Is it just used as a substitute for a textbook or is it used to create, think, organize?
So the walkthrough is something that we're going to, we are going to do or we have started?
We're starting.
Because I would feel more comfortable seeing the results of something like that rather than, this is a huge endeavor, and to me, it is a lot of money and a lot of effort into something when we don't have some of that information on the front end. Does that make sense? Like, I'm not as confident, I feel like if we had some concrete evidence that this is really, because to me, the most important thing for student success in the classroom is a good teacher. Technology is great, but it's not, it's not the most important thing. And so when I look at the frameworks for the district, and I'm not saying technology isn't up there, I just wonder if this, if this is like where we want to go right now. I'm just a little nervous to pull the trigger, like without having some of this really concrete data that says, yeah, this is definitely something our students need to be academically successful in.
And I think we have a lot of that data on the pilots. I mean, I was going to say, people know a lot from those pilots. But we, across the spectrum, and I was in classrooms and saw it work in some groups and other classrooms of like, this isn't going to, this isn't working. So whether it's written-down data, hard data, objective data versus subjective. But I think that, I think we have done our diligence on how we want to direct our, not only our dollars, but how we want to use the devices to maximize learning and engagement.
Has it recent software greatly increased the ability to conduct that kind of data collection or software? It seems like that's what in your earlier presentation, the classroom management, there are greater capabilities than there were before.
Yeah, I think, I mean, every year, there's new stuff out there. And I think we have a lot of opportunity to better track that information as we go forward and to gather that. I think, you know, some of the things we've talked about in the past with gathering that data is, some of it, like Roxy alluded to, we can use graduation rate because it's going up, but that's very hard to prove that it's because of this. State assessment data could be going up greatly. That's very hard to prove that it's simply because of this. We've seen two great programs tonight. That could be affecting that as much or more than this device. It's hard to put a value specifically on the tool. Whether we have a great teacher in the classroom has an impact as well. So I think for us to try to narrow down, it's this device's, I don't want to say fault or responsibility, but it wasn't necessarily because of this or it was because of this being in that classroom. It could be that we had a great teacher that year or a different set of kids or, you know, the curriculum changed a little bit or, you know, there's a lot of variables occurring in that. So I think that's where we focus a little bit to say, this is the reason. I think it positively is impacting change at the high school. I truly believe that, being up there every day and seeing what kids are doing in their classrooms and how they're using the device, whether I can pinpoint that on the state assessment or in their attendance data, those kinds of things is, to me, seems very difficult and hard to pinpoint specifically because this is in their hand every day. But I do believe it is making a difference. And we can try to continue to gather data, like Renee said, we, you know, we're looking at things all the time for how we're impacting. We, you know, we're looking at things all the time for how we're impacting kids and how their teachers are using the devices in the classroom to have a greater impact on that student engagement side. I definitely think we have teachers at all ranges of that ability. Some of that's because they're brand new in the classroom and it's their first year in teaching and they're trying to learn how to manage a classroom, let alone try to figure out how to teach with the device. So I think as we, the best part of our plan that I really liked was the ability to get those teachers a semester of training before we actually hand out devices to kids. Because I think that will have a greater impact on the success of having this in their classroom. I think we found that a little bit with the high school. We bought the devices and we had some training with teachers, but not exclusive. This is what we're training you for before we implemented up there. I think that's why we had that year of, we had some teachers who didn't really want it and so they didn't want to use it and they were unsure of it. And so it took longer for it to grow into a successful program up there. I think the way we outlined it, being able to train teachers ahead of time. So they walk in day one, ring with a lesson plan that already incorporates their device. They've got new classroom management strategies. Because when you give a kid a device in a classroom, you have to manage differently and be out and about, providing the Apple TVs and those kinds of things or making those differences. And teachers are already learning how to be out in the classroom differently when there's kids with devices. Because it is easy to get off task. I mean, we'll be honest, if you sit in any meeting with any adults or kids, people are off task. It's just the nature of having that device in our hands. So training teachers how to manage that in the classroom is a huge step. And if we don't take advantage of that in the semester we have with them, then they are going to struggle when we get there. So that's the part of the plan I really like, is being able to provide them those opportunities to practice that, have those things there, you have devices so they can kind of practice those skills. So on day one, they're prepared. And I think that will have as big an impact on... I got a big G asked about it last time. How do we ensure every teacher is equally using the devices? And that's, to me, that's the best way we can do it, is to get them training upfront. So that when they start day one, they know where their comfort zone is and they're not trying to figure it out on day one.
Dr. Carl?
I might remind the board too, the reason that this study happened and the plan occurred was because as a board, as you were out in schools, you saw where teachers were making the choice to use building budgets to buy more technology and we were getting some buildings that had a lot of technology, some that weren't investing as heavily. And we wanted to make sure that there was a level of equity amongst the schools. I don't think we would have teachers wanting to have these devices if they didn't feel like they were effective uses of time and positively impacting learning. I think that was studied in greater depth through the eight or nine different pilot variances that the technology committee went through. I think there was some surveying of students and, or of teachers and...
Parents.
Parents ultimately. But the whole impetus to study this was really because this was a board priority to dig into this and come up with a plan. And I think there's, I think you've had a good process to do that, but there's really quite a bit of background that went on in terms of the work that the group did. So I just don't want you to forget that it's been a year thing.
Absolutely. Jane, did you have a comment?
I think you have a very interesting question. And as I'm thinking about it, it occurs to me that utilizing technology isn't just like utilizing, you know, a different pen. It's incorporating into our curriculum in all subject matters that they use their iPads in, learning how to use digital technology. And so it's sort of an additional part of the coursework. I mean, it's incorporated into science and math and all of the subject areas. So I think if we're looking to prepare students to become responsible citizens, part of that is to learn how to use technology successfully. And this incremental approach where we're doing it at lower grade levels and then kind of working them up to be more dependent at a higher grade level is probably good because you don't just want to hand somebody this in college and have them go through all that, the throes of learning what to do and what not to do kind of on their own without supervision or guidance. And I know in the past, before we had the iPads and we have this, this plan for kind of doing it in a supervised way, we had some students who used social media and other technology and those things had to be addressed. And I know having observed, you know, the sort of the lunchroom areas in the old high school days and the lunchroom in the new high school days, the students at the old high school were not sitting there eating their lunch and playing a game on their iPad. There was a lot more activity and some of it was not appropriate for the lunchroom. So, I mean, it seems like it somewhat settled them down to kind of be more thoughtful and be more relaxed. So I sort of like that, you know? That's what we do with our kids when we need to have a few quiet minutes, we hand them our own. So it works in that way. And I would say that our district, at least those who use the iPad, we're technology dependent. We've incorporated a lot of the capabilities of the iPad into our curriculum and we're asking students to do things that are more rigorous, you know, because we know they can and they can do that research. So I like that aspect of it a lot. And we're similar to other districts that surround us. So we're not handing students back, we're letting them kind of stay up with the rest of the group. I think the other part of that question is what would not having it have done? And I think that would have been detrimental to more students. I think they wouldn't have gained some of the capabilities that they have. It's probably not the perfect answer, but I think we've come a lot further with it than we would have without it. So that's why I'm in favor of being able to extend it to the lower grades so that they can work themselves up to that independent use and ultimately end up as a responsible citizen. Having a digital citizenship that Lori and you have talked about in the past and being...